This is the City of Frankfurt. Board of Commissioners, regular July meeting. It is 5:00 PM and I'll call the meeting to order. We'll begin with a pledge of allegiance if everyone will rise.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America. Consider Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now I ask the city clerk to call the roll.
Commissioner Thompson?
Present.
Commissioner Unger?
Present.
Commissioner Waldrich?
Present.
Commissioner May?
Present.
Mayor Walkerson?
Present.
And we'll begin with ceremonial and recognition. Nothing official, but does anyone have anything they'd like to share? Commissioner Waldrich.
I would just like to congratulate once again Derek Graham for his receiving the NAACP award. At this past banquet, the mayor and I were present. And just wanted to say congratulations as he's working toward the end of his term. And so we'll lose a leader in the Frankfurt area on that board. But appreciate all that he's done for Frankfurt and the surrounding communities and churches and things. Also, just want to give a shout out, probably speak on behalf of the HO board. This weekend was really exciting and very inclusive. Four did a great job in hosting the Juneteenth event out at Lakeview, which was very fun and very engaging. If you missed it, you missed a fun time with the community. And also Pride at Sig Leshur, they hosted. That event down there, it was very well attended. It was very hot, but it was a nice event. And also, the Irish Dance Culture Series moved on again this year or this week. And it was down at the River View Park. And there was a great turnout for that. So I'm looking forward to a lot of other events that we continue to host in partnerships with the county and in partnerships with all the organizations across the community. So I just want to say thank you and great job to city staff and all those that come out and support these events. Also, I want to say thank you to Sarah over in our Public Works for working so hard and diligently with the state in getting our signs put up. For Alicia Adair is our next person up for Welcome to the Home of Alicia Adair 2012, Ms. Track. So her sign was up. We had a brief reception with her family and we are glad that her sign's up. And so we look forward to having her sign up for the next year. And then we'll move on to the next person if no one else has anything in between, which will be JT Riddle. And then hopefully on to Ms. Goins as well. So we can get everyone in our community recognized with their sign as they deserve. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other ceremonial or recognition? If not, we'll move on to citizens' comments. I know we have a few. And I'll ask everyone that come to the podium, state your name. And we allow you five minutes. We'll give you a one-minute warning. And first, Tammy Angelo. Welcome.
My name is Tammy Angelo and I live in Bell Point on Dabney Street and Pulse Grove. I complained last year about the traffic down there. It is very corrosive down there. Sometimes I end up in my driveway, or in my, not my driveway, but in my yard. There's a stop sign coming down Pulse Grove, a one-way street. Last year, the Works Department put up another sign that says, "Stop, do not enter." So there's two of them there in place. But nobody still listens to that stop sign. They blow through it constantly. The only time they stop is if they see somebody coming on Pulse Grove around onto Dabney Street. There is too much traffic for that to be a two-way street because nobody stays on the right side of the road. I've seen cars almost get hit each other on that turn. The other thing that I want to say about is down on Kentucky Avenue, that is very dangerous too. The house on the corner, they park their vehicles clear up to the curb. Only one car can get down through Kentucky Avenue coming into Bell Point. Those cars are always parked there, constantly. You can't even see coming down Kentucky Avenue to turn onto Dabney Street to even see the traffic. And you might end up getting hit coming through there. I just want something done. I've been down here 11 years. I haven't owned a property very long, but it's very dangerous down through there. We have kids that are on skateboards that come down through there and fly down Dabney Street to Pulse Grove on skateboards, bikes. Somebody's going to get hit. And I'm just fed up with it by nobody telling me they can't do nothing. It doesn't do no good to put a police officer down there because if they see the police officers, they're not going to, they're going to stop. And it's not going to solve the issue because nobody's going to be able to see them do it. I sit on my porch most of the day. I like to watch my birds because I got a yard full of flowers. And you don't, you wouldn't believe how many cars that I see do not stop. I mean, in a day's time, I can sit out there for about five hours and I see maybe two cars stop at the most all day long. The traffic is terrible down in Bell Point. I don't know where these people are going or where they're coming from. The same cars is constantly going down through there. I don't know if there's still a drug problem down in that area or what, but something's got to give. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Angelo.
I don't know what else to do. Besides, it's my opinion and I'm not getting nowhere.
And I have a quick question. So we have, the city has put up a sign.
Yes, they did.
We've made some attempt, okay.
Yes, the Works Department. But I'm told that the Works Department can only do so much because of what the, what you guys are, you know, standpoint. And, you know, like I said, I'm not going to meet anybody to come plainclothes, sit on my porch for maybe two hours and even see what I see in a day's time. And if I yell at the cars, they get mad at me. But I don't want my yard ruined. I don't want my house ruined. I don't want kids to get hit. And it's dangerous all the way around.
We'll take it into consideration, see what we can do. But thank you for coming.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next, Jane Julian.
Hello, I'm Jane Julian. I hope that most of you got the email I sent to the officials this afternoon. And I'm just here to say I want to ask you to support the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan as they are now written. I believe for a long time, the land use and planning and zoning involves doing the highest and best use of property. And I think accepting and supporting the revised goals and policies as they are written now would contribute to the comp plan being the highest and best use of property in town and all around the county. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Julian.
May I ask a question, Ms. Julian? I got your.
Does somebody have a question?
Yeah, just a quick question. I got your email earlier today and read it. And I'm glad you brought up the highest and best use. I was wondering if you could define for us as a group what you believe the highest and best use definition is so that we can utilize that when looking at this, at whether we accept that or not.
Define the highest and best use of property? It's the property, but it's the use that benefits the community the very most and that saves and protects natural resources and protects people's health and enables people to grow real healthy food and serve it to the whole community. It's, that's about it. It's.
It doesn't, it doesn't include, the best use wouldn't be for necessarily having more jobs or more tax base for their community. It's always the healthiest base for.
Well, growing and selling healthy food and protecting the water that we all drink and things like that, I think would be the best and highest use of natural resources and land. And I think people will want that.
Good. Thank you very much. Appreciate you.
Okay, you're welcome. Anybody else?
Thanks for coming. Thank you. Next, Richard Rosen.
I'm Richard Rosen. And I want to talk to you about a problem that you are all too familiar with. Both the city and the county have long lists of worthwhile demands on their funds, but not nearly enough funds are available to meet those demands. I know you're struggling with it as you work on your budget right now. These projects and programs that are asking for funds would improve the quality of life for all our citizens, but they keep getting pushed out into the future, a future that might never come without action on your part to increase tax revenue. Here is a list of some of the projects which you, I have shared with you before. I'm not going to read through them, but as you know, they include underfunded city departments, major capital expenditures, and contributions to local NGOs, including those that help to feed, house, and protect the homeless and abused citizens of our community. These are things that our community wants and needs. To fund these projects, the city and the county needs to raise more tax revenue. I can think of six ways to increase tax revenue. One, raise property and occupational taxes. I'm not recommending that. I don't see how that benefits the citizens of Frankfurt. Grants. I think you guys are doing a great job at finding grant money for projects in Frankfurt, though oftentimes those grants require matching funds, which are hard to come by sometimes. Tourism. Yes, tourism is very important and I support all those efforts to increase tourism. But unfortunately, it creates relatively low-paying jobs that pay little occupational or property taxes. And those jobs have limited disposable income for spending in the community. Number four, infill redevelopment. To be successful, infill projects need people with disposable incomes that can afford to rent and purchase properties that are part of the infill project and to spend, have money to spend in the commercial shops and businesses in those infill projects. Without an influx of new people with well-paying jobs, our existing population, if they try to support the infill development, they'll just be playing a game of musical chairs, creating other sites in the community that are going to need infill development. Number five, white-collar office jobs. The U.S. is awash in empty office space. Twenty percent of the U.S. office space sits empty. Work from home is a large part of the cause of this. And maybe we can take advantage of that trend towards remote workers. The Remote Frankfurt Initiative, which you have started, is a good program that is just getting off the ground. And I fully endorse that. But it too takes money, money that is well-spent in my opinion, but the impact will still be relatively small. Number six, industrial development. Industrial jobs pay a high salary, a high salary averaging $62,000 per year. And every 100 new industrial jobs creates an additional 55 more jobs in the community. These industrial jobs with high disposable income are what will increase property and occupational tax and thereby improve the quality of life for Frankfurt citizens. And it will provide jobs that will be filled by our children and grandchildren so they will not have to move away to find work. Franklin County's population has been growing at 0.4% per year over the past 20 years. That's only about 20% as fast as Scott, Woodford, Anderson, and Shelby Counties. Franklin County has been handcuffed because the previous comp plan had little land on the future land use map for industrial development. Our ability to increase tax revenue for important projects has been hampered. It appears that the future land use map of the proposed new comp plan is going to continue to drastically restrict growth in tax revenue. As is, the new comp plan only shows about 250 acres of land for industrial development on the future land use map. Last week, you received a copy of a resolution from the Kentucky Capital Development Corporation. This is the body created by the city and county to increase industrial and commercial economic development.
Is that this time? Could we just give them a few more minutes?
No objection here?
No objection.
All right, thank you.
That resolution asks for between 1,750 and 2,000 acres of land for 30 years of future industrial development, that this land be included on the future land use map. I ask two things of you. First, would you please pass a resolution today that you agree with and endorse the KCDC resolution? Second, when the time comes, please insist that the future land use maps that are a part of the comp plan include between 1,750 and 2,000 acres for future industrial development. I feel this will do the most good for the most people in our good city, which is striving to be even better. Questions?
Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you, Ms. Rosen. I would ask, you're seasoned in this and you and I have talked. Can you tell me what your definition of highest and best use of property is and how that might differ from other individuals who may think that the comp plan is perfect the way that it is?
Good question. And I think there are some misconceptions about what industrial development means. References have been made to polluting our groundwater. It doesn't. They're connected to our sewer system. It goes to our waste treatment facility, the same as all the household waste. Air pollution. It's not a power plant that's burning coal. It's not, it's, I don't, I don't see that, I don't see that industrial land needs to be a polluting thing. Talk about preserving our natural resources, I agree with that. Some of the land that I have in mind for industrial development is not natural land. It's been converted to pasture land. The trees have been cut down. And if it's not used for industrial land, you know it's going to be used for residential and commercial, which does just as much damage to the land as an industrial park would. If you go out to the industrial park, it's not an eyesore. It's a vital part of our community. So I think best use of land is land that is contributing. I look at it as a kind of a two-step process. Industrial land creates jobs. Jobs, three-step process. Industries create jobs, well-paying jobs. That increases tax revenue, which comes in the form of increased occupational taxes. They will buy homes. They will rent apartments. That results in increased property taxes. You then, can the city, can take that money, that increased tax revenue, and invest it in our community to make life better in so many different ways. If you look at that list, there are things which improve the environment. Removing invasive species, planting more trees, planting pollinator habitat. Dark sky projects, that's the environmental side. Increasing salaries like for our police department so that neighboring communities don't steal them away from us after we've trained them and we're stuck on this treadmill of recruiting and training new police officers only to see them go away. You've made, requested cuts to the Parks and Rec Department. I know you didn't do that, I know you didn't want to do that, but you are really constrained by the lack of tax revenue. That's what, that's what this, that's what KCDC is trying to do. That's what this comp plan should be trying to do. And unfortunately, I think it's on the wrong track.
Thank you for. Any other questions or discussion for Mr. Rosen? Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Next, citizen's comment is Brooke Christopher.
Mayor, Board of Commissioners, City Manager, City Staff, Ms. Nala. My name is Brooke Christopher. I am a lifelong resident of Frankfurt and Franklin County and a retired city employee. And I'm also a U.S. Navy veteran. This past weekend, we held a reunion of crew members from the USS Fairfax County. These members served from 1971 all the way into 1994 when we sold the ships to the ship to the Australians. About five or six years ago, we started having reunions. We had one in Norfolk. We had one in Washington, DC. We had one in New Orleans. And I was able to talk those guys into coming to Frankfurt. Close to 50 former crew members and their wives registered at the Capitol Plaza Hotel. And we had a reunion here. And I want to thank each and every one of you for the work that you have done in the past to make the City of Frankfurt so inviting that people want to come in here. I've been on the text message and phone all day with them and they're, you know, it's just nonstop of the praises that they have for you. We had a proclamation. And I thank you so much for making those veterans feel welcomed here in this community. Thank you, Mayor, for issuing that proclamation. I also want to give a big shout out to all of the city employees that do all the hard work. You guys who have just made Frankfurt beautiful. I mean, it really is, you've really worked hard. And I know it's not an easy thing to do for you to come in here and do what you do. We would not be the community we are a vibrant community that we are without you. So I thank you. And so do the crew members of the USS Fairfax County. Another big shout out I want to give to is there was a transit driver. And they took a group of my people on their route and dropped them off at Buffalo Trace and picked them up. And John Unger was the driver. He is a dear friend of mine and he is an outstanding city employee for you guys. Wonderful person. He gave them history. I think he drove around the Capitol and, you know, kind of gave a little short history lesson. They were so grateful for that. And they, you know, it's coming back in of all the reunions that they've had. They liked Frankfurt the best. And some of those people will be coming back. So I thank each and every one of you. And to show my appreciation, I want to give each of you a challenge coin slash keychain.
Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you, Ms. Rosen. Thank you.
It's not worth less than $50, is it? Commissioner Unger?
Thank you.
It's one of $50. Commissioner Waldrich?
Thank you.
I'll take this.
Thank you, sir. I'm hung up here. Appreciate that.
Thank you so much.
Mayor? Thank you. Thank you for having them and it was a great group to meet. Yeah, they were all very, very nice. City Manager?
Thank you, sir. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. I don't live in the city. I live out on the east end there in Two Creeks. But I do follow you guys. You guys do great work. And I thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming in.
I'm sure the rest of the community does too. Have a good night.
Come back again. All right, that's it. That's the end of citizens' comments. I think no one else. And we'll go next to the consent calendar. I'll turn it over to our city manager.
First item on the consent calendar will be the minutes from work session May 13, 2024, regular meeting, May 20, 2024, special meeting, May 29, 2024. Item number two, emergency shelter certifications for local nonprofits. From the Grants Department, staff request Board of Commissioners approval for the mayor to sign the certification of approval for local nonprofits for the Simon House and Campbell Street Shelter for the Kentucky Housing Corporation Emergency Solutions Grant for the emergency shelter component. There is no budget impact to the city. Item number three, NEMT subcontracting Public Works Transit. Transit requests commission approval to re-enter into a contract with Bluegrass Community Action Partnerships Incorporated to provide non-emergency medical transport services for Medicaid participants throughout Franklin and surrounding counties and for the mayor to sign all related documents. Transit expects under approximately $122,000 during the upcoming fiscal year on this program. Item number four, personnel actions. You have an appointment. Trayvon Byers, E911, 64, 2024, telecommunicator. Appointment, Kevin Johnson, Public Works Transit, 64, 2024, transit driver. Appointment, Michael Ansert, Public Works Transit, 529, 2024, transit driver, non-CDL. Appointment, Herbert Skaggs, Public Works Solid Waste, 611, 2024, Solid Waste Tech. Resignation, John Kendall, Police Department, 62, 2024, patrol officer. Authorized payout of accrued leave. Have a resignation of Tyler Spradlin, E911, 64, 2024, telecommunicator. Transfer Cameron Bingham, Public Works Solid Waste, 64, 2024, Sewer Tech to Solid Waste Tech. And a transfer, Justin Bowler, Sewer Department, 64, 2024, Solid Waste Tech to Sewer Tech.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion to approve the consent calendar in a second. Is there any discussion? None, I'll ask the clerk to call for the roll.
Commissioner Thompson? Commissioner Unger?
Yes.
Commissioner Waldrich?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Mayor Walkerson?
Yes. Consent calendar is adopted. And next up is boards and commissions. First, we have the Frankfurt Housing Authority. This is the appointment of Harry Carver, filling the remainder of Maria Bush's term, expiring January 29, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this board appointment? Commissioner Unger?
Thank you to Harry for stepping up. He's been to almost every single one of our housing committee meetings and very concerned about affordable housing in the community. So I think great fit. Thank you, Harry.
And thank you, Maria Bush. Circumstances are that she hasn't been able to attend the last couple of meetings, but she's recommended we find someone else for the time being. So I want to thank her for her service. No other discussion? I'll ask the clerk to call for the vote.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Unger?
Yes.
Commissioner Waldrich?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Mayor Walkerson?
Yes. And number two, Board of Park Commissioners. This is the appointment of Natalie Greshiri, filling a vacant term. And this expires May 1, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion on this appointment? Commissioner Unger?
I'd like to thank Natalie. I know she's a very concerned citizen. She's got two young kiddos and plans to stay in Frankfurt. And she'd like to see our parks continue to improve and be great like they are. So I'm more than happy to have her step up on that board.
Any other discussion?
I think she's a good fit.
I'll ask the clerk to call for a vote.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Unger?
Yes.
Commissioner Waldrich?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Mayor Walkerson?
Yes. And that motion carries. And next, we'll move on to action items.
First, we have a second reading.
An ordinance amending Chapter 74, Schedule One Way Streets of the City of Frankfurt Code of Ordinances. This ordinance amends Chapter 74, Section 1 of the City of Frankfurt Code of Ordinances and provides that Hawkins Drive from West Second Street to Taylor Avenue going north will become a one-way street. Also included is a list of existing one-way streets previously excluded.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to adopt this ordinance. Any discussion?
Seems like it'll make it a little safer in the area.
Definitely.
I'll ask the clerk to call for a vote. If no one?
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Unger?
Yes.
Commissioner Waldrich?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Mayor Walkerson? Mayor Waukerson?
Yes, that motion carries.
Item number two is a second reading.
An ordinance amending Ordinance Number twelve, twenty twenty-three series appropriating the revenue to be received by the City of Frankfurt for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. This ordinance amends Ordinance Number twelve, twenty twenty-three series appropriating the revenue to be received by the city for the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four by adding the following expenditures and transfers out as noted. General Fund, one million, one hundred and two thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five. Transfers from General Fund, eighty-nine thousand, five hundred and nine to capital improvements. Capital improvements, eighty-nine thousand, five hundred and nine. And by adding the following revenue and transfers as noted, General Fund, seven hundred thousand. Capital improvements, eighty-nine thousand, five hundred and nine, and those are all aggregate totals.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any other, uh, any discussion on this ordinance? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call for the vote.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Unger?
Yes.
Commissioner Walbridge?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Mayor Waukerson?
Yes, and that ordinance is adopted. Action item number three is a first reading looking for a sponsor.
I think it's possible.
Commissioner Unger?
Oh, sorry. An ordinance appropriating the revenue to be received by the City of Frankfurt for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. This ordinance appropriates revenue to be received by the City of Frankfurt for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five in accordance with the budget submitted and hereby approved.
And, uh, any discussion on this budget ordinance? We'll need to do a second reading before. So we'll have a special reading pretty soon. No discussion, we'll move on to action item number four.
Action item number four, Home Street Corridor NAE Project Strand Associates Agreement Amendment Number One, Final Design Right-of-Way Utility Phases and Resolution. Strand has submitted a fee proposal in the city with Kentucky Transportation Cabinet concurrence as negotiated a nine-hundred-and-fourteen-thousand-and-four-dollar fee for Agreement Amendment Number One. The current budget is nine-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand, of which eight-hundred-thousand is NAE grant funding and a hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand is city match. Staff recommends approval and for the mayor to sign all related documents.
Motion to approve. Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion or questions?
Oh, I was just gonna say, um, I'm just excited this is continuing to move forward. This has been many, many years in the works and, um, applying and moving us in the right direction to continue to improve Home Street and so I've, I've been a huge supporter of this and I'm just glad to see that we're taking another step forward. So I'm excited and also glad that Chuck Knowles is gonna be over it. So, he probably doesn't feel the same way, but we're excited, uh, because all the details and he keeps us abreast of what's going on and always up to date. So thank you so very much, because you do amazing job for our project, uh, projects and keep us on the timeline. So thank you.
And my question is on the, the match, have we determined yet with the new, with the grant program that the state, I guess, refined in the last session, are we eligible for that in Franklin County to get, to get match on federal dollars yet? Do we know?
Chuck reached out to them on this specific project, I believe.
We are, we made initial contact with them and I've kind of given them a heads up that when we have the opportunity to apply for grant funding to finish the High Home Street Corridor that will be coming, uh, asking for some state match out of that program. So they're aware of the project and maybe asked to support some of that later this year.
And that, that's our one-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-dollar city match, is that gonna be part of that?
Uh, no, that was, uh, listed in the application that was submitted last September. So we committed to that, I'm not sure whether it comes out of general fund or how Alicia has it set up in the budget, but, uh, that will be separate from this new program that we'll be asking for later this year.
Any other? She wants to say something.
It looked like she wanted to say something.
No, I, I just wanted to say that, um, that's not anywhere in the budget yet. So I informed the city manager this morning in our agenda setting meeting that, um, we would need to do a budget amendment for that, so that way everybody knows. Um, but yes, it's not anywhere yet in the budget, so.
Okay.
Thank, you're welcome.
I'll ask the clerk to call for a vote.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Unger?
Yes.
Commissioner Walbridge?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Mayor Waukerson?
Yes, and that motion carries.
Item number five, Frankfurt Reconnecting Communities Pilot Program for Sales Road Agreement with KYTC and Resolution. The board commissioners voted in April of twenty twenty-four to enter into a grant agreement with the US Department of Transportation for the Reconnecting Communities Pilot Program for the Sales Road Project. Commonwealth of Kentucky Transportation Cabinet has agreed to administer this funding and is now necessary to enter into an agreement with KYTC. Staff recommends approval and the mayor to sign all related documents.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Commissioner Unger?
And I talked to staff about this earlier. I was just wondering if there's any sort of, um, diagram on what this project would look like. I understand it's for, um, pedestrians to try to cross safely or safer. So it would be a medium project. I was also just wondering if there are any other things that, um, we could potentially work on to, um, traffic calm in the area. So just putting that out there, things to think about.
I've discussed with Public Works already, but I believe this is, Chuck can correct me if I'm wrong, this is just for the planning phase right now.
Oh, okay, oh, good.
Yeah, it's only the planning phase, I think it's totally completed.
Call for a vote.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Unger?
Yes.
Commissioner Walbridge?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Mayor Waukerson?
Yes, and that motion carries. Moving on to action item number six.
Action item number six, Surplus Order for Solid Waste Van. Uh, staff recommends that two thousand and six Chevrolet van be declared surplus and the mayor to sign all related documents. It will then be sold at online auction, but the money returned to General Fund.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And motion and a second, any discussion on this surplus order? If none, clerk, will you please call for the vote?
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Unger?
Yes.
Commissioner Walbridge?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Mayor Waukerson?
Yes. Action item number seven.
Action item number seven, Kentucky Infrastructure Authority Project Number A two-one-dash-zero-one-eight Loan, which we know here as this East Frankfurt Interceptor Project. Uh, resolution approving and authorizing an assistance agreement between the City of Frankfurt, Kentucky and the Kentucky Infrastructure Authority to provide up to nineteen million, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars of loan funds for the East Frankfurt Interceptor Project.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, any discussion on this motion? If not, I'll ask the clerk to call for the vote.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Unger?
Yes.
Commissioner Walbridge?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Mayor Waukerson?
Yes. And that motion is adopted. And action item number eight.
Action item number eight, Capital View Park Amended and Restated Lease Agreement. Staff request authorization for the mayor to sign the amended and restated lease agreement with the Commonwealth Finance and Administration Cabinet, Department of Facilities and Support Services Division of Real Properties and any related documents.
Motion to approve.
And we have a motion.
Second.
And we have a second. And discussion, Commissioner Thompson?
Mayor, I, I am frustrated, uh, bit shocked, to be quite honest with you. And, um, I think the, I think the folks of Frankfurt should be, um, appalled at, at the fact that since October thirteenth, nineteen eighty-three, we have maintained this land. It is, uh, this lease that they want us to sign, um, actually is retroactive to October thirteenth of two thousand and twenty-three. We're on a month-to-month lease right now. I would suppose we stay on that, but that's neither here nor there. Uh, this, this land is, uh, is owned by the, uh, the State of Kentucky, Justice and Public Safety Cabinet and the Department of Corrections. Something that I pointed out more than two years ago and was summarily shouted down in this very room saying that that wasn't true by a former city manager. We have maintained this area for forty-one years. We have infused over twelve million dollars into this, into this facility. We have asked over and over again for the last four years for the State of Kentucky to grant this land to us. And instead, they provide us with an extended lease. Actually, they sent us a letter first. I think it's important that the citizens, um, hear what, what was said here from the Director of the Division of Real Properties, Natalie Brauner. The city had inquired about the possibility of a fee simple conveyance of the property. And upon review of the request, it was determined the Commonwealth of Kentucky does not wish to transfer ownership. However, we look forward to continuing to work together under the terms of the attached agreement. The, uh, State of Kentucky has not acted in good faith in the past with the City of Frankfurt. We all came down, uh, seven years ago and watched gleefully as they imploded our tower and, uh, took away the rubble for a couple of weeks and then we realized how badly we had been messed over by the, the State of Kentucky. In this lease, um, it specifically states, whereas the, the less C has proposed to infuse a significant amount of improvements and capital investment to repair and improve the recreational facilities located at Capital View Park in exchange for a twenty-year lease term with two five-year options. Whereas in exchange for that infusion of capital into the lease premises, the lessor is amenable to extending the lease term. Well, that's awful nice of them, um, to let us use the property that we have improved. This has a thirty-day out clause. They can kick us off that property in thirty days. And I don't trust the State of Kentucky as far as I can throw them. And what they have already done to this city, I have no doubt that if the Department of Corrections under the Public Safety Cabinet needed that property to either fund a, a justice center or move it to Frankfurt, which has been talked about many times, they would take that land away from us instantly. I, I would encourage every single person that has used these facilities, that has children that use these facilities, that has children and, and individuals who've played on those soccer fields to contact your representative in the fifty-sixth and fifty-seventh district. Call them up and tell them how frustrating it is that the legislature has not acted on this, that they have allowed the administrations to, um, strong-arm us into, uh, improving this land for them and yet they control every single aspect. They can tell us what we can do, what we can't do with the land, they can enter into it anytime. If they don't like what we're doing, uh, they don't have to, uh, let us do it. But they give us a nice list of things that, that they're okay with us doing and, uh, that they would like for us to do. They want us to, uh, potentially realign all of the athletic fields. They want us to upgrade all of the athletic fields with new backstops, irrigation upgrades, new press boxes, new scoreboards with LED technology, we can't have the old technology. Potential second access road for increased traffic flow, parking lot upgrades, multiple ADA improvements, multiple concession stands. My favorite one is artificial turf. It only took us about twenty years to have that happen at the high schools, but, but the state's telling us that, that we should do that. Large picnic, uh, areas, uh, new pickleball courts, I thought that was nice. Uh, must be one of the governor's, uh, favorite things to do. Landscaping improvements throughout the park, new site furnishings throughout. It is utterly ridiculous that in today's world, when the City of Frankfurt has been the second-class citizen of all other counties in this state, that we would stand to allow the state to tell us, we're not gonna let you have property that's in your territory, that you have improved by twelve million dollars plus, but we'd like for you to infuse another ten million dollars into it and we'll let you use it. I am utterly frustrated with that, considering the fact that right now, Mayor, we have the Sunshine Center closing. We have the Men's Shelter that is struggling. We have our twenty-four-hour emergency shelter that is closing. And while I want all these ballfields, uh, to work out, I, I don't want to spend ten million dollars and have this taken away from us, just like the Civic Center was. That's exactly what can happen under this. And I'm tired, I am so tired of the State of Kentucky treating Frankfurt like we are second-class citizens. And it's about time that we, as the city, just say we're tired and we're done with it. We should have leadership doing this. And I am all for not signing this, staying on a month-to-month lease, which is what we're at right now. If they take the land away from us, they're gonna take it anyway. This lease doesn't mean anything. And if we sign it, all it is, it's requiring us, uh, to infuse money in here when that money needs to be infused in other areas that we do own and that we can invest as capital improvements. And I am, I would just end with, this is, is a disgrace that the State of Kentucky has once again lumped in on the City of Frankfurt.
Hey, Commissioner Thompson, any other discussion? Uh, Commissioner Walbridge?
Thank you, Kyle, for sharing. I think we, um, agree on a lot of terms in this. Uh, I've been, I've been outspoken about this. I want the park, I've always wanted the park since I've been on this commission. I think that it's only fair and it only makes sense in our community. But in giving how much this lease has changed and everything that they're asking for us, it's almost as if there's background conversations going on that they want us to improve this. And then one day, they are gonna pull this out from underneath of us and maybe make it into a state park after we put all of our money in. So I think if they're expecting all of this to come from our pockets, they need to be giving us money for these upgrades and upgrading it themselves and we can continue the maintenance on it. Or there needs to be something in the lease to say that if they do, another governor or anyone else comes in to take this park away from us for us not to use it, that we need to be reimbursed for every dime that we put into this park. Right now, we're just setting ducks and we continue to do more for this, the City of Frankfurt, the capital city, then it seems like, uh, we're getting money coming into our community. So I would agree in this. This is just foolishness. I'm not even sure who actually let this come off of their desk. And I don't know if I would even say that the governor's even read over this, uh, since his signature's not on it, but maybe you could give him a copy and let him read to see how important this is for our capital city and how outrageous this sounds, um, in so many different ways. This is a project that I actually wanted way before we got the marketplace because we, I don't, I didn't think our community was ready to put the money and have the funding set aside for Marketplace where the farmer's market was. This was a piece of property that we should have been focused in on to make sure that we were retaining this so we could have this for tourism and for money coming in, for softball and all of these other complexes and soccer over there. We continue to put money in, it's still not ours. And obviously, there's something going on here because they wouldn't have made so many different changes. So my goal is, what is the conversations behind the scenes on why they feel that it's okay to ask the City of Frankfurt to pay for all of these things and they've not put one dime into it? It makes no sense to me. Uh, maybe there's been conversations with you or with city managers that you may want to share with us. I, I just did not see this coming, that they were gonna ask for financials from us and we're just asking for a piece of property that we've been putting money in, upkeeping, and put over eight-hundred-and-something thousand dollars for lights and things of that nature over the past few years. And this is a big price tag. They weren't there for us when, when our occupational tax went down to be there. We had to get money. All of these other communities are thriving because of their money, their federal money because of COVID. We didn't get that benefit to use our money for benefits of our community. We had to take that money and reimburse ourselves for occupational tax that we lost for the state. And we are still behind, no matter how much our numbers are increasing, right now, we are still behind and it's not fair that we, the capital city, do not have the same funds that Louisville and Lexington have as far as COVID is concerned and to put back into our community. This would be a huge benefit to our community. And I definitely would support ongoing month-to-month for us to have some more conversations and maybe bring more people to the table. I'd like to know more on it, so I just, I don't know, I don't know everyone else's thoughts on it, but this park is huge for our community. And, um, I just don't have time to pour money into it right now, we have other things to do.
I was gonna say, I, I read in the lease that the state, if you read the lease there, it does say that the state would reimburse us for any capital improvements and, uh, you know, it does, it does, it sounds like we would get reimbursed, so. If, uh, the state were to, uh, take the property back. So anything that we do put into this, it's my understanding that we would get back. Because I asked that question myself. Commissioner Unger?
Um, and the, the list in Exhibit B, that's one that we provided because it's part of the master plan that could potentially happen, that, that's, we're not saying that every single thing would happen, correct? That's just a list of possibilities.
Correct.
Okay, just making sure.
To follow up on that, is this, so the list that's in there, are they saying?
To follow up on that, is this, so the list that's in there, are they saying, are we required to do those things, or these are things that are allowable?
Suggestions.
Suggestions. Okay, so they're not requiring us to do those things?
Yeah.
Which has been implied.
It does not say that we're required to do all of them, but it says because of the, because we will infuse capital into it. So if we don't infuse capital into it, we haven't upheld our end of that contract either.
Would this?
Commissioner Wildridge?
Would this be a part of what Senator Williams is trying to do with the capital district that he's trying to say? Would this property be a part of this so-called capital district that he's trying to create right now to sort of, is that why they're holding on to it, that he's looking to add part of that into that?
I don't think.
In that capital district?
I don't think that he's looking to do it as a capital district. I think what the option is, is that if they obtain a portion of the city for the capital district, that they would have to swap a property for it. So I don't think that's, I don't think those, I don't think the person making this decision is working on that issue.
That that's not part. So basically, it's sort of lingering out there, like it's sort of like bait to say, we're going to hang on to this, because we're going to want you to do this capital district thing over here, and we're going to hang that over your head.
But I just, you know, again, we're dealing with executive branch versus legislative branch.
Any other discussion? So we would get, our city attorney, may I ask, will we get reimbursed if we put significant, let's say we do put ten million dollars into this park?
Yes, so.
We will get reimbursed.
So this lease, it is a lot longer than the previous lease was, and I do want to recognize that. A lot of that is due to a considerable amount of language that they are starting to add into all of their contracts, just to be more thorough about department approvals within the administration. So there is some of that that now is making the contract longer, but I do just wanted to draw your attention to a couple of things. This has been infusing the capital. That's been the language that's been in the lease for as long as we've had a lease. They do always want a list of our proposed potential projects that might occur, which is why the exhibit is attached. If you look at Section 2A, it does say infuse capital in accordance with items listed in Exhibit B, and then it says, prioritization of these items is within the sole discretion of the lessee and is dependent upon available financing and approval of lessee's governing body as applicable. So nothing in this lease shall require lessee to complete all items in Exhibit B or prohibit us from asking approval for different items. And then for the first time, and I will say, the city manager and I have had numerous meetings with the state, and for the first time, they have been, they have agreed to, during the current term of the lease, if they terminate our lease, they will reimburse us based on their own appraisals, but they will give us a reimbursement for the fair market value of the improvements that we have placed.
Where is, where is that?
Sure, that is.
I'm trying to find it. I remember reading over it, and that's not.
Sure. And that is a huge, huge change from the many years that we have, we have had this lease. So we are happy about that. I think that at least should help with some of the concerns. Yes?
Commissioner Wildridge?
So, and so I'm reading over this, and it really depends on fly-by-night who's governor, who's not, who gets in, and things like. We can have this, but this also starts from the moment that we sign this of what they're going to reimburse. So if they were to come back next week, we don't get any of the money that we've spent over the last forty-one years, whether that's lights and everything else, and that's what I'm saying. Like, we're losing money.
That is the way, up until this point, this is the first, the first time that they have agreed to that. And we have tried for that.
I know we've spoken about that.
In the past, definitely. So yes, it is starting from, retroactively from the term this lease went in, but.
And it does, it doesn't include the value of the land?
No.
Improvements made prior to twenty-three?
No, it does not.
And it doesn't approve, it doesn't even approve the man-hours that we would put into upkeep of the property.
And we're required within thirty days to remove all of our stuff off of there.
But with now a reasonable time for removal, that was another new provision that we asked for.
Reasonable by the time.
Anybody else require? I have a quick question.
Go ahead.
Commissioner.
It feels like we're then gaining something for the first time since eighty-three.
We do. We were very pleased with the fact that we got some of the things that we've been asking for. So I know that this may not be exactly what everyone wants, but we are happy to know that going forward, we have some protection in there for whatever expenditures we put in.
Great. Okay.
And suppose we don't sign this lease, do we get anything for all the improvements we put in over the past forty years?
No.
No.
So we're in the same situation.
We don't get that anyways.
I know, but that's what I'm saying. If we don't sign the lease, we're not going to get paid back. If we sign the lease, we're not going to get paid back. But going forward, we will get paid. So, I mean, either way, whether we sign this lease or not, we're not getting the funds that we put in all those years ago, and if that was an issue, maybe we should have addressed that years ago. But we do get, I hear what the concerns are, and I, of course, we would, there are lots of pieces of state land that we would love to have either ownership of or at least getting tax revenue from. But then again, it's, you know, we're the state capital, and there's a lot of benefits because of that. So I hear the concerns. It does sound like an improvement. We still have use of the land, and I think this gives us a little bit more confidence to make the investments according to the park's master plan that have been identified. That's important. Commissioner Wildridge?
And I just want to say, Mayor, I mean, I see that there are things that we've been asking for, for a few years. I mean, we've been asking for some of these updates. I know since I've been on, since two thousand and nineteen, so some of these have came across, and different people have been in these positions. So it's good that some of these are changing. My issue is still that, goes sort of back to what Commissioner Thompson was sharing, is that, you know, what happens when something like our Civic Center just employs overnight and we have no say about it or, you know, with the change of hands? It is a contract, but not everything is safe in this contract. That's just how I feel with the Civic Center, I guess, because there was a contract there.
But I will say, you know, it is, having it in writing for the first time that at least going forward, we would get reimbursed, is definitely a change from what it previously was. But no, you're absolutely right. The timeframe remains the same. They can terminate the lease.
Yes. Thank you.
I guess one other question. In your opinion, if we did not vote on this tonight, do you think that there's any reasonable chance that we would, that we could improve this contract?
Considering how much effort we've put into it, I do not see that happening at this juncture.
Any other discussions or questions?
Well, I guess my last comment would be, it's rocking a hard place of understanding. It does put us in a better position, because I definitely, I don't want to put off Capital View, even though that I stated in our last meeting months ago when we were talking about lining up all of our parks' items, that I wanted a lot of money to go to the East Frankfurt Park and let that be a concentration until we figured out what was going on in Capital View. So I'm not sure exactly how much money or the number or the cost of the projects that we're looking for moving in the next few years for Capital View, but I would like that money to be protected if there's money that is going into Capital View, definitely. It's just a scary thing. I just don't want the taxpayers' money to go away. So.
Any other? I asked a clerk to call for a vote.
Commissioner Thompson?
No, I don't need to explain my vote. I've already had.
Okay. Commissioner Unger?
Yes.
Commissioner Wildridge?
Can I ask one question to the attorney? In regards to this, once we've signed, this will go on for the entirety, and there can be nothing changed in between tonight and the end of that until it comes back up for the five.
That's right. This is our twenty-year lease, and unless there's default or unless somebody exercises a termination right, this is, this is the way it will be. Or someone requests an amendment?
Children born today.
To request, you said, or we could request.
There's always, there's always the opportunity to request amendment as needed.
Okay, that's sort of a safety. Well, then I will say yes upon that, and just hope that we can continue to try to move forward with the state in trying to get this, to obtain this. I know it's been many, many years, and you probably try to hear it in so many commissions, but hopefully we can continue to move forward with some kind of relationship to obtain this property, so we can have it. So, thank you.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Mayor Walkerson?
Yes, and that motion is adopted. And that's the end of action items. We can move on to any unfinished business. Commissioner Wildridge?
I just wanted to, I guess, sort of, I know that we had citizen comments, and so I just wanted to bring up first Ms. Angela's comment on regards to the Bell Point area. If we could sort of direct staff just to look into it, to see what we can improve in regards to her, just so that there's movement on it, and we know that there will be a follow-up to Ms. Angela, so we know what's going on. So if we could do that, that would be great.
Yeah, I'll follow up the public works first thing in the morning, and we'll get something going.
Thank you. So my second unfinished business is in regards to seeing if we can start working on an update to the old YMCA building on where we are with that, the legal issues. I think we need an update on that, whether it's a closed session that we need to talk about, but we need an update on that. I've had a couple of people continue to ask, especially with the restaurant beside it being up for sale at this time. I've had some questions. And then my other unfinished business is in regards to KCDC. We're needing to meet on that. I attended the KCDC meeting, their last meeting in regards, and there was a mention of allowing their new interim director to write an RFP for Strategic Development Action Plan, which didn't make sense to me, and being that it had not came across our desk, I don't know if it came across the magistrate's desk. I think there's things happening in KCDC that we've not been made aware of, so we can actually put our ideas in as a commission. So I think we need to have a meeting in regards to KCDC. We have people from the city that actually serve on that board, that speak for us and represent us, but we've not had a meeting with those board members or what our goals and objectives are for KCDC from our side as the city and the county. So I don't know if that needs to be a joint meeting on what we look out for that, but right now, it looks like they're writing up an RFP for that strategic plan, which I'm hoping will match something that will look good for our comp plan, but I just didn't understand, and it came out of nowhere. And it looked during that meeting, they were wanting, the interim director was wanting to approve the RFP. There was not a RFP present, and so they ended up approving for the interim director to write up an RFP, and I'm assuming that will come back before KCDC. And I just think, before it comes back, before KCDC approving, something should be coming across our desk as commission, being a part of, of having people on that side. We should know something or have some kind of discussion on the outlook of KCDC. So I just want to know what's going on there, if we can get an update on KCDC for our side of it, so we can have an understanding, and we can all be on one accord and be able to move forward. That would be great.
Commissioner Thompson?
As much of a critic as of KCDC that I have been over the last three and a half years.
You've not been a critic.
I know, hard to believe. I think there is a level of autonomy with KCDC, and while they receive funds from us, I even think that their charter states as such, I don't, I don't know how much we can, I mean, I think we can ask for an update at any time, but I don't think we can tell them thou shalt not do a particular thing or not do a particular thing. And I'm all for, you know, having Ms. Peebler come and tell us what's going on. I know Mr. Rosen knows a number of things, but I won't force him to do that right now. But, and I'm all for that. I just would, I'd be weary, because I'm almost positive that that ninety-three resolution has passed, because I read it a million times, gives autonomy to them to make those decisions, including applying for, applying for grants, applying for RFPs, owning land, all of those things. And so I would, I just, I would just throw that out there as, you know, information, great. I don't know that we can do much more than that, but that's just, I mean, we don't even have a voting member on there. I mean, we have, the mayor is our ex officio member, right? Not voting.
Correct.
Correct. And I would say the same. If you want them to come give an update, that's fine, but we don't need to see, or really, we don't have a voice in, I mean, through our appointees, we do. And really, I appoint them. I appoint them, and the commission doesn't approve. It's just, if we don't like what they're doing, we can reduce funding, we can not fund, we can try to change the structure, and we looked at all those things over the past three years, and we've been through it. But I think a strategic economic development plan is something we put in our budget. We wanted to take up on the KCDC, and we're happy that they're finally doing it, so.
Can I make a comment on this, or?
It's not on the agenda. I'll decide.
Yeah.
I'll have the floor.
What do you, I was just going to make a comment.
Well, I'll give you the floor. When you want to come up and make a comment, Mr. Rosen?
First of all, Kyle, thank you for pointing out that KCDC is independent, and you're not the boss of me. You can't tell me. But I think Catrice's point is relevant in this respect. If we're going to work on a strategic economic development plan, but we are handcuffed by the comp plan, you do have input to the comp plan.
Correct.
And so the two go hand in glove, and if they don't agree, the comp plan says, sorry, you can't do the economic development you want to do because they're not giving you any land, then it becomes an issue which I think is very relevant to the Board of Commissioners in the city.
May I?
You're asking me?
Yes, whatever your power is right now. Yes. So my question is, and getting cut off, it's not that I said that we have a vote on it, and I agree with what you're saying, and I keep getting cut off in that because whatever reasons, but what I'm asking is, we have three people from, that are representing the city, which you're one of them. There is communication that can happen there for us to understand that we're on one accord. The comp plan and this strategic development action plan or whatever, they need a match, or we need to understand. All that is, you take that back to your board, and you guys make decisions, but not that you make that decisions without anything from the city on, you know, our direction and where we want to go. Do we support this comp plan? Do we want more acreage for this comp plan and want more things? Or do we want this strategic plan, and are they going to match?
Exactly.
That is a conversation that we, as a city commission, do need to have, and for you guys to hear that, so you can represent the ideas of a commission in a magistrate.
Thank you, Catrice. That's why I raised my hand. I agree with you.
In the KCDC board. So no, I'm not saying that we have a vote and we're going to force you to vote, but we can give you information from our perspective of residents that we represent here as taxpayers, to take that to KCDC and maybe make some decisions.
Yes, and your decisions on the comp plan affect radically.
That is correct.
What we are trying to do with the strategic plan.
That is correct.
Thanks.
Any other unfinished business?
Mayor, can I, can I ask that we have the resolution passed by KCDC on the fifteenth day of May on the next agenda for a vote, whether up or down, by the commissioners, please?
I have no objection to that, but I would also consider some resolution, if not approving their exact resolution.
Understood.
Have a resolution of what we want in the comp plan.
I will wholeheartedly agree with that.
Because we, and that's why I think our planning director sent out an email this past week, asking again for input on the goals and policies, and we haven't received any yet, and that's why we don't have anything to vote on tonight. So, Commissioner Wildridge?
And sorry, and the rest of my follow-up on KCDC was that, in the last meeting in regarding to the budget, we have certain subsidies that go out for KCDC, and I requested the information that I still haven't received yet on what that hundred and twenty-five-thousand dollars they requested from us was going. There was a lot of talk of that it was going to go toward, oh, we're going to cover this make-my-move, but the make-my-move was a decision after the fact. So the hundred and twenty-five thousand requested from KCDC, I wanted a breakdown of that. I, as a city commissioner, have not received that. Maybe I overlooked it. If so, I apologize. I'll look in my email again, but that goes back to Mayor, you just sharing that didn't have the information. I don't have the information. That's what I'm asking for from my board, from that board, to say, hey, just let us know what's going on, because you're asking us for an increase. That increase did not cover. That increase did not cover the make-my-move. The make-my-move decision came after the ask from KCDC. Therefore, in the KCDC board, it was asked, are we giving them more money to cover the make-my-move program, whether it's incentives or what have you? The answer in there then became from, uh, Mayor, you spoke at our meeting saying that it was covered, and I disagreed, but in the KCDC meeting, you said you didn't think that it was covered. So I was trying to get an understanding of what the ask of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars was and the goals and objectives of moving forward, because in the KCDC meeting, they're looking to hire staff and all of this. And I was just wanting to know the breakdown of what that was, because that's what we're asking of all of our subsidies. Um, and so I wanted a little bit more on that, because the make-my-move is, what is it, thirty thousand? Is it a thirty thousand? I think it moved up to a thirty thousand feet. So with that, plus the incentives cost, none of that is in our budget. No incentives are in our budget, and the thirty thousand dollars is not in the city's budget at this time for make-my-move. So that's what I was trying to understand, the communication between KCDC and what's in a KCDC meeting versus what's been said in our city commission meeting. It was also stated at the KCDC meeting that our attorney made changes to your form as well, by the interim director stated that, and when I go back and look at the emails, that is also incorrect from your interim director of saying that our, um, attorney made changes. We have not made changes to that contract in regards to the tax increment, uh, application. So I'm just, that's why I'm wanting us to communicate more, so we do know what's going on. As I stated, going to a KCDC meeting, it didn't match up with our city commission meeting. So I'm just wanting to update. So, thank you.
And I just think that I need to clarify that I did not say in the budget meeting that that was happening. I, that KCDC was going to take over the make-my-move. That was my preference. I said that was what I would hope would happen.
Thank you for that clarity.
Commissioner Thompson?
Mayor, just as a point of, I guess I have a question, because I'm looking at the email from Mr. Cochle here, and, and maybe I just misunderstood this, but, you know, it says, please see attached slightly revised goals and policies. Uh, based on some minor comments from magistrates, in my opinion, there isn't anything terribly meaningful to the changes in terms of content. The goal is for this to be the final version that you all in the fiscal court approve next week. So I didn't see this as, hey, send me some feedback on this. It says, this is intended to be the final version. Are, are we still taking comments on this? 'Cause I gotta, I gotta salute.
We had it, we had it on our work session back in, in May, and we didn't, I mean, we didn't have anything to add. I mean, that was our, I think, an, an opportunity for us to discuss and make changes, should we want to make changes. And when it was discussed, putting it on the agenda for tonight at our steering committee meeting last week, I asked Eric, 'cause if you make sure that we send it out again, that people know that if, if we're gonna vote on it, we need to make, give everybody an opportunity to add whatever they want to it. So, uh, we still have time. It's, it's not, you know, it hasn't been adopted by the planning commission yet. So I think this is our opportunity to have that discussion, and we can put it on the next meeting, either July eighth or, uh, even a special meeting if we wanna do that, uh, on the budget, depending, you know, on our time. But I'm happy to, you know, come out of that with a, maybe that's our resolution. We submit any, I would recommend that we submit anything that we would like to add to Eric, including, uh, industrial land, uh, whatever sectors you wanna focus on, anything like that. And then see what comes out of that, and give us something to actually vote on, to submit to the planning commission. Is that?
Correct.
Okay, well, I guess I would, I would say that it would be counterintuitive for us to do that on our own. I think, I think the whole point should be that, that the, that we should probably have some form of a, I hate to say it this early, but a joint meeting with the county. Um, because, again, looking back on that, that May thirteenth, that Monday, May thirteenth, um, meeting that we had, where Mr. Cochle presented, and we received that document at eleven-ten that morning, that was a land-use public engagement takeaway. That was, that's what that, that's what that was. It was, his presentation was the takeaway of those things. And, and I, I mean, I could go back and, and watch it again, but I, I didn't take even that meeting as, you know, give me some, some criticism. In fact, after the, after the planning commission meeting, I wasn't about to offer anything in, in public because of what happened in that meeting, so, um, but if we're, if we're still allowing, you know, elected officials, um, who were elected by the people to make comments, I would love to make comments. I, I just did not know that that was, uh, requested at this time, but if we still have time, great. That's all.
I think we, I think as a board, we have an opportunity to submit something to that, for the planning commission to consider. And then the ultimate plan comes back to us. Anything else? Let's move into new business.
Oh, I have, sorry. Um, I would, I would like to direct staff to review the obligations of third-party owners that may be leasing, um, property to the state regarding ad lorem taxes and the legal obligations thereof. Uh, in doing so, I have, uh, been reviewing, uh, in the last week, um, the Churchill Downs, um, contract, I guess you can say, uh, payment contract, uh, that's, uh, being worked, that is worked out with the city of Louisville and their, uh, Jefferson County Public Schools. Uh, when, in two thousand seventeen, when they, um, determined that the value of the, um, horse track was now one hundred and seventeen million dollars, uh, they got hit with a big tax bill. Um, and, uh, they, as a payment in lieu on just the racehorse track, not all of everything that they own, which is two-point-five billion dollars in revenues a year, they pay one million dollars to, um, the Jefferson County Public Schools because, uh, the third party, um, is, um, leasing that to a government entity, uh, for those bond purposes. Um, I would, I would ask that we look at that. A hundred and seventeen million dollars, they receive a million dollars. In the two square miles of downtown Frankfurt, um, there is five hundred and eighty-five million dollars in PVA-valued, um, property that is used and leased by the city of, I'm sorry, the state of Kentucky that is, um, either owned or is, um, being leased as a portion of a P, a P-three contract. And, uh, once again, um, a hundred and seventeen million in Louisville. They get over a million dollars a year for Jefferson County Public Schools. We have five hundred and fifty million dollars in downtown Frankfurt. We get a hundred and seventy, a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. It just doesn't make sense. Um, second thing, uh, Mayor, I would, uh, I, I would ask that the staff be directed to, uh, begin, uh, providing, um, the, weighing the pros and cons and, and, uh, the, the efforts of, uh, potentially moving, um, City Hall to the old federal building, which we know is the old Paul Sawyer Public Library, something that we, that people have talked about, uh, in back rooms and in discussions. I think that is something that needs to, uh, be talked about seriously, um, as we move forward. Um, it just makes sense to do that. Mayor, I would like to, uh, revisit the issue, um, that was quite contentious at the end of, um, Ms. Wildridge's, Commissioner Wildridge's first term regarding Fort Hill and, uh, the bike trails on Fort Hill. Um, I think that would be something phenomenal to, um, have a discussion about. And, uh, then I would, uh, last thing is, I would like to discuss, um, the separation of historic sites away from, uh, our sports and recreation department, as I don't think that those two need to be combined.
That's a lot.
I just, that's all. Just, however we can think, Mayor.
About city manager, follow-up on that, if that's all right, and see what the.
Understood.
Will digest. Any other new business?
Oh, I have one.
Commissioner Walsh?
Um, I had a call, um, from a Jessica, um, bushes on the four-oh-one Noel in the corner of Fletcher. Apparently, the community has spoken with the homeowner there and asked them to trim their bushes because there's almost been accidents and people getting hit 'cause they can't, at that stop sign, take a turn. Um, but, um, to no avail, they've not been able to do it, and said they're not gonna do it. So I just wanted to see what we can do to sort of render something, whether put a mirror or something on, a pole or something. I don't know. That's happened to see you around, but I, I, I haven't been over there to see the bushes, but they said that her teenager daughters that drive have almost been hit, and it's a dangerous situation.
We can start by city neighborhood inspector.
But I'll send you an email with that information as well. I just haven't had time. Sure thing. And that's all I have, Mayor.
What's the neighborhood inspector at?
Okay.
I will entertain a most.
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor of adjourn, say aye.
Aye.
We adjourn. Thank you all.